That's it.
Thanks. This is the regular January monthly meeting of the Dayton Development and Industrial Commission. I have six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded for broadcast on the town YouTube channel and on cable. If you'd all like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the United States, to the Constitution of America, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The first item I have, I have no old business. We actually haven't met since October. November, our meeting was canceled. Remember, we had something with the selectmen, so this was actually spread now. And the first item I had was on the drone video footage that we had had done over the summer up into like latest September. I think she was still doing it. So in September, she had sent me the raw video files. So right before Thanksgiving, I reached out to Bristol Clements. And they were able to convert them into MP four files for me. I asked him what the cost is, and they said, well, we'll figure that out bill you later. But they also said that they really only charged from materials. They don't generally charge for later. So I submitted the form. And since Thanksgiving, they've never gotten back to me. So they just did it for, I had no cost. But I just wanted to, I can share my screen. Yeah, see if I can. Just wanted to show you some of them, not all of them, because there's a lot here. I think this out of the way. So this is the track and field. It does, yeah.
Wow, camera work is excellent.
She also took a lot of just still photos, but from the air.
Right.
So it's a mix of video and still photos. Uh, let's see, next one, I'm gonna show here. It's Old Town Hall. I'm sorry, there you go.
Are you going to put that to music?
Well, I mean, this is stock footage for us to use at some point for however we want to use it. Or and actually, since it's town property, anybody in the town, any committee could use it, but. No, we hadn't really decided like how we were going to use this in terms of marketing. We just wanted to have it in our back pocket and so. Oh, the jerkiness is actually my computer. It's not her footage here. Yeah. See what this is. Some really nice ones of shaws and a river.
Put this to peaceful music. I'm gonna fall asleep.
Sorry, I'll just go like.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna sing me a few minutes.
That's what I do to my wife when we go to church. Oh, she's supposed to be listening now, but you're gonna be in trouble.
There's us three or.
Wow, it all looks so different.
Doesn't it?
Really looks nice. Not that it doesn't look nice when you go down there, but I mean, this really looks outstanding. Was that a sneeze?
God bless you. There'll still be more coming. I can't just do one.
What?
But what?
Are you passing both pair or something?
Well, bless you. Usually I do it in threes.
It's just gonna be edited, right? Oh, yeah. Now, all of this is just raw footage. It's just, yeah, you're gonna edit this, shorten it, put it together in a mix.
The shared footage is three hundred and sixty degrees.
No, I don't think she did too many that were three sixty like, in other words, she would have circled in John Berkeley if she'd done it here, but. And remember, we never got permission to do the Millon Spring Street. County Street where the business locations are. And Paul, I don't know if you can hear me. I don't know if she ever got in touch with her aunt because she never sent me any footage of the horse farm. So maybe they never really connected.
Oh, no, she didn't. No, she, I believe they did. I, I put the two of them in touch. And I thought she told me that, that she came down to check it out, but I'll, I'll follow up with her off, off, offline, but I was.
Okay.
I was of the understanding they did, but I could have, I could have got.
Okay. She just never sent me any footage of it, so I just assumed they hadn't connected, but. You know, I guess we'll look on here. Or close up of shaws. Sorry, trying to get this other stuff out of the way. Thank you. There's some still photos. This is. Arusha, oh, wow. Baseball. And I know what I'm doing here is just a sample. There's a lot more here, so. So that's what, just wanted to show you what we got here.
Now what happens with it?
Like, well, this came up and it was John's suggestion originally was that he had some money at the bank and he found this contract on it, rich water. So we had been talking about marketing and how are we gonna do that? And so this was in further inexpensive way because she only charges seventy five dollars per site to do this. To just have some. Material that we can use. How we were gonna do that marketing is all future. And we can try to talk about that if we want to do that this year or not. But this was just material in our back pockets and also when we get to that point, so. Any questions about that? No. The next idea I had of was the Discuss Review Act on the proposed, what's now the February meeting at the Board of Assessors. We've actually been talking about this since last May. Which is, we had questions and some, some business people come to us with questions too about how do property taxes in particular work? If I have a home based business, do I get charged a percentage of my property as commercial? You know. And so we had gone to the Board of Assessors and said, well, I don't have a joint meeting. And ever since then, it just keeps getting kicked down the road, kicked down the road because. They're not available, then we're not available, then we say, why don't you come this month? And by the time they get it on their agenda to talk about it. It's too late for us. So I suggested, I saw Stephanie this morning, Paul. My recommendation was, why don't we try doing this as an interview, like you've been interviewing businesses in town? And other groups like the Chamber of Commerce?
Absolutely. That's a great idea.
Yeah. I think when we started this idea, it was before you had started doing that. But that just gets rid of all the complications about tying and getting the two groups together and. We had submitted to them way back when, like nine questions. And they could come back with us with some draft answers, but. And we can invite some people or some of us can sit in the audience and, you know, have questions to, to raise. It probably will be a little bit longer than our standard seven to nine minute, you know, interview, but. I think it's a good way to do it.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that, that, that sounds great. We could even potentially. Request through the Board of Selectmen to the Town Administrator's Office to make a Facebook post soliciting questions from people who are, who are curious as well. That way, if they couldn't attend, they could still have their question represented.
So this will be at the February meeting?
Well, no, this is gonna be Paul interviewing. And he'll do it. Generally, we've been doing some like a Saturday morning when cable is available. So it's the questions. And so it just kind of be then I guess Paul and Cable and whoever it is from the Board of Assessors, so Stephanie or somebody else or. That, you know, can speak to some of these questions. And he would just take an interview like I'm here. Kind of like he's been doing it for a couple of businesses in town, spotlight, yeah, so.
So they won't be doing, we won't be having a joint meeting?
No, I, I think that's, that's our problem. It can never really get together. It's a joint meeting. It's just our schedules keep. You know, bouncing back and forth with them and so.
I like it.
You know, like, yeah, that'll work. So I don't know if Stephanie actually saw you today and said something, Paul. I saw her this morning. She said she was gonna reach out to you, but.
She did. She, she mentioned it. I, she, she seemed, I got the impression that she would be doing the interview with me. Rather than somebody from the board, which that, that would be, no, that would be great, whether it's exclusively with her or with a board member in conjunction with her. Having her be kind of the boots on the ground on a day to day basis. I think she would really be able to provide some great information.
Yeah.
And I also think that the interview style format would be really good because. You know, she is an expert in her field and, and every now and then, you know, you can, if you're explaining something, when you know a lot about it, sometimes you can talk for a few minutes and then. Get to the end of your, end of your answer and then realize that there were five more things that you wish that you had said. So I think that the spotlight format, or if she wanted to, if there was an answer that, you know, there was additional context she wanted to give. When we film the spotlights, we have the luxury of being able to, you know, reshoot, right? We can do retake. So if, if a question is answered and then she realizes after the fact that there's additional clarity she wanted to give. I think that that would be a really good, good and clear way to get the information across. So, yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to be available for that whenever.
Also, for people who don't know, because they didn't meet, we haven't really met since October, except for the very short joint meeting we had in December with the Board of Selectmen. Paul did another interview, which took a long time for them to post. It was with the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce. It was with the President Chris Silva. So I thought that had been posted and done like two, three weeks ago. But then Cable just sent an email saying, hi, we're sorry for delay. We're ready to post it. So. I did share a link with Chris at the, at the chamber. But apparently it wasn't officially posted on our town website until like yesterday or today. So it is up there now, though, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. The next item is to discuss Review Act on our 2024 plans. And this kind of leads into our next item after that, which is the budget for the next fiscal year because that budget request is due to be authored by February first. We really have to decide from now, you know. So I did include and send out what was the implementation table from the. Serpents' recommendations on the Economic Development Plan. A lot of which is townwide, you know, but they do have a name on quite a few things in here. In talking, in talking about like this and finance requests. Very few of the things in here are actually. Were, were cost anything, really. I mean, they cost in the terms of labor. A lot of work by the planning board in discussion, that sort of thing. But in terms of our asking for funds to move some of these things forward, there's not a lot. But I thought maybe we could use this as a starting point, so people may have other ideas. But I just wanted to start teaming up what we'd like to do. You know, and start laying out plans so we can accommodate that. I will say, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, the Chamber has made a decision that this year they're gonna move the. Their business development to Rainham. They've been having it here for the past couple of years, so they are gonna move that to Rainham next year. It doesn't mean. Every, everybody in the district isn't invited, like business can still go, but they're looking for a venue there for the coming year. And that had been part of our monies each year. We have been sponsoring at two hundred and fifty dollars. So that like business could go without no charge, so. We may not be doing that in the coming year in terms of our. Finances. But I just wanted to put that out there too, as we talked about, like our money for the coming year.
Yep. Hey, Dan, I mean, just because the Chamber isn't organizing it and doing it. Doesn't mean Dayton can't do something, right? I know when we met last time, I know Lenny, you were a little bit disappointed that. You know, it looks like the Chamber was gonna focus more on Rainham instead of Dayton. But if Dayton wants to do something, I mean, you know, if we want to try to originate something for the local Dayton businesses, you know, that's. Should we have a discussion about that?
It's a good point. You're right.
Doesn't need to be us leading it, right? Us meaning the Chamber. I'm sorry.
Correct. That's true.
You know, I, I love that idea. And doing something like that would require us to go off campus if we wanted to serve liquor. And I, and I think of. Some of the events that Arusha's. Has sponsored and been involved with. And using a venue like that. Built on the point of the year. Might create not just bringing in businesses, but make it a little bit of a social event, so you could bring people together. But make. The regular. Average citizen that doesn't own a business. More aware. Of the businesses that are in the community and also from the social point of view. Because those events at Arusha's have been wonderful social events as well, and it brings people in. And that's what we want to do.
Right. So we haven't had that discussion with, with them. I don't know what requirements would be in terms of doing that. We have to come up very quickly with a cost estimate if we wanted to make that part of our planning for next fiscal year.
I could reach out to sponsors too.
So what, I mean, maybe we can just, we can talk about that after, we can reach out to Arusha's, talk about it. But with the idea that most of the funding, if it's required, particularly if we serve liquor and there's costs associated with that or food. That we would be soliciting sponsors to cover as opposed to making an ask of the town to pay for it. And then we can see how we can pull those two things together.
I'll tell you, Chris put a lot of work into those events. You know what I mean? So they're not, they're not, if, if you want to do them well, right? They take a lot of energy. And somebody's, you know, we may want to have somebody as like a point person, right, to. To lead that effort. Or we'll, or we'll all be going, oh, I thought you were doing it. Oh, I thought you were doing it.
Okay. So if we put that down as something we would like to do in the coming year, no particular timeframes. But not something that would increase our financial ask for the year from the town. Do people think that's. Reasonable, or we're gonna have to ask for money if you want to do this?
I, I wonder, trouble is. We've focused on all those events. Businesses that were. Home business.
For everybody.
If we change the direction, focus, try to encourage the home businesses. To show what they're doing. That would help drop.
Ad- advertise. I think if we got comment at one of the previous events, it was that they didn't have an opportunity to showcase their own stuff. Having said that, we did get that opportunity at the Firecracker Festival and only one person took a step on it. But, you know, maybe that, we can just include that as, you know. If we have a space, if Arusha's, you know, willing and has room. You know, maybe people can come and set up and advertise their wares. I mean, it's a lot of ifs here, but.
Would it be under? The Development and Industrial Commission? Or would it be a separate entity such as Dayton Business Association promoting businesses in town?
I think there is a Dayton.
I know there is. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. No, it would be us, I think, doing this. I just think that since it's kind of. Something we're just kind of floating here. And we don't know if we're gonna be able to pull it off, although it's a great idea. I'd hate to go to the town, you know, right now and say. We need several hundred or several thousand dollars for this idea that we have. So I'd much rather say that if we do it, we either find a way to do it on the cheap or ask for sponsors. But that it's a great idea to, to work on here. Doesn't mean we have to lay, lay out details tonight and. I can start by talking to someone at Arusha's and see what they feel them out. Since I think the cost of a venue, particularly if it's going to cost us anything, would be the, one of the biggest factors.
Glenn, do you think there are any grants or assistance out there for what we're thinking of doing in the business world?
Definitely because it is, has a social aspect.
I think the food and beverages would be the most expensive.
It would be the most expensive, yeah.
I don't, I mean. They would be, the Arushas would be able to.
Yeah.
Because they always do food and.
Right. Okay. So.
So we don't, they're really nice.
All right. So I'll take that as an action item to reach out to them. Talk to them about this idea and see what their experience has been, what would be involved. If they personally would be able to host something like that or not, if they have some suggestions for us. And then we can go from there. So if we want to use this implementation table though, as a guide. I was just gonna run through the suggestions that had come up quickly and I can share this on the screen here. Serpent, this is part of the Economic Development Plan. This is in the, the end of it, the summary section. Yeah.
Who composed this?
Serpent. But it's now been adopted by the Board of Selectmen as the updated. Economic plan for the town. Let's see. Share my screen again, yeah. Does everybody have a copy in front of them?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. So let's just go through that then. Okay, so this is.
And of the links. That are on here. Like they don't work in the PD app, whatever.
Oh, they don't?
No.
Okay.
So do they work?
They work in the online version of Serpent. I can resend the link to the Serpent report.
Did you, did you send that to us like before that?
Before the December meeting, but I can resend it to you, so. So as I said, some of these are more directed at the Planning Board, but with input from us. And some of these are actually works in progress. Like complete a thorough review of the zoning bylaws. I know that Mike is already applied for a grant for a consultant to help the Planning Board. Now go through end to end. The existing planning documentation of bylaws. Hopefully, I'm not sure if it'll be this year, hopefully the end of this year that'll come to fruition, so. The second one was create a user friendly development and permitting guide, which I know exists for the town, but. Paul, you in particular had had some comments about. It's rather textual. It could be a little bit more. User friendly if it was, had some graphics in there. It could be, some of it could be condensed down to a trifold. You know, that you could just keep on display at town hall as you go in, or the town clerk, or somebody could be handing it out.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So, and there are things in there that have no application to us, so we wouldn't want to be changing like stormwater, but. I think it, it would be a good idea to have somebody go through that and make some recommendations about how it could be made a little bit more user friendly.
Absolutely.
I don't know if somebody wants to stick that on as items, just look through the good thing. Permitting guide that's online and see what recommendations they can make about trying to make it more user friendly.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll continue to look through it. Yeah, absolutely. I'm.
Okay, all right. So I'll look at it as well, Paul, and then we can just trade some suggestions and bring them back here and. And then tee them up. Mike actually authored it, so I'm gonna tee it up with Mike afterwards and see, let him know what we're thinking and what kind of suggestions we have. I particularly think if we can get it condensed down to a trifold, and I have seen other towns do that. So, you know, at least the key points can be something, so it's not a long, you know, twenty five page PDF kind of thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. The next one is clarify mixed use zoning regulations to facilitate redevelopment. I am not a hundred percent sure what she means by that, to clarify the mixed use zoning. I mean, in general, it'll be part of that whole bigger review that the Planning Board, you know, might have a consultant help them with. I, I didn't know what kind of confusion she thinks she, if there exists in mixed use planning.
Mixed use is just basically the property can be used for both.
Correct.
Businesses and. Residential.
Correct.
And it can be used for different types of businesses as well.
That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense.
Any type of business?
I'm sorry?
Any type of business?
Well, depending on what's, right?
All of that has to be permitted from the planning board. And decided by the planning board. Whether or not, no, it's not gonna be just any business. I mean. You can't.
But factory.
Have an industrial business running out of. A house or.
Right.
And it's mixed use. But if you wanted to use to, to build, say. An apartment house. And a mixed use area. Of course, you'd have to go to the planning board and make sure that they will allow you, gotta meet the guidelines, but that's. One of the things that's done. But.
But what are the guidelines?
What are the guidelines? There's a lot of them. And there's five board members that will go through those guidelines when the time comes. And that's why we have the peer review to make sure that they. Explain all of those things and right, that's why it's so expensive.
In the comments, she did pull out specifically things like Interplast Route forty four. So I think she's like thinking about. Can you do a little bit more on Route forty four to make it more business friendly? Can you do anything with Interplast? So that it could be more versatile in terms of it just being. Not underutilized the industrial, right, which is now.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think.
But, oh, John, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think, you know, part of the Economic Development Plan, you know, as proposed, is that this whole mixed uses. They were talking about building buildings. They were talking about building buildings um, that have commercial space on the first floor and residential uh, space on, you know, second, third, fourth floors. Um, so I, that's, that's how I read like mixed use, right? It was commercial on the first floor and residential on upper floors.
That's a possibility, but I'm not so sure that that's the actual meaning of it. I, I think what mixed use may be, you can do a property that will have a business on it, and next door there can be someone with a, a home or whatever, or you can add a business to a home. You know, I think that's what it, what it, but all of that has to be approved by the planning board and agreed out by the the planning board, that's why every permit is on as it comes to, that's when we decide upon that.
Yeah.
And so not one thing is exactly like the other. Am I making any sense?
Yeah, no, I, I think this is the kind of thing where she is suggesting like, particularly places like Interplast, you know, a princess house that it's kind of underutilized as a, so.
That's, that's zoned industrial.
I know, so she's recommending like, can you look at the zoning there? Can you see if there's something else that could make it be a little bit more? At that capacity as opposed to. Fun it is now, I think it's mostly storage areas, so. You had a little bit in the front with Co-op, you have a factory in the back, and then I think you've just got a lot of storage being used, so.
Is it classified totally industrial right there?
That is.
Now, the water area.
I'm sorry?
The waterfront in the back.
But then again, if we go to Lincoln Avenue, a lot of the homes next to the river are zoned industrial. That was decisions made by you know, to many, many, many uh, people in the past, you know, so. I, I don't think they were zoning, because only bylaws existed then. Because otherwise, they, they couldn't have done.
Now, one of the things that caught Berkeley's interest why they wanna come and speak with us, was the potential behind Interplast of waterfront development. And if it's possible.
Do you mean residential development, or do you mean a commercial like residence, like uh, restaurants and?
Right.
Things like that.
And I think that's what Serp was bringing out as an option. Like you rezone that area, specifically that area, to something that could allow waterfront restaurants and a small green light park there and
Really nice down there.
Maybe stores on the first floor and apartments on the second floor and, you know, you could get a lot more.
Do we have any areas to do that?
Yeah, Princess House specifically, you're talking.
Oh, that's.
Yeah. Again, this is like, all gonna have to be discussed when, you know, the zoning, the planning board does a big overhaul or at least looks kind of more shoddy of, you know, the town zoning and.
And I, I don't think that we would have to go to the owners of Princess House to talk to them about that?
To rezonate? No.
Yes.
But for them to utilize it in any way that they want, sure, that's it, now they have more options. You know, but to just rezonate, that's not their decision.
Joe, you, you sell it to them.
Yes, but what benefits would that be for the town to allow apartments over businesses like that?
I think the town would get a lot more tax money. Storefronts with storefronts paying taxes with rental, you know, helping to support those business owners uh, on the second floor, not to mention that that's personal, that's a, that's now residential property that somebody's paying commercial taxes on. As opposed to, I think eighty percent of that bill, that whole facility is now, is just raw storage, which is a minimal tax benefit to the town.
The, the concern I have is our schools are already at, at a cap.
One or two bedroom apartments.
Why, you don't think they make babies in one or two bedrooms?
I was saying, if it was split to one or two bedroom apartments, if it was senior housing, I mean, those are all options, senior housing, one or two bedroom apartments. You know, those are all things that limit all of that. It's just that, right now, none of that's even possible with the current zoning.
I, I, you know, I'm not trying to say anything, but uh, I think anything that has to do with residential really does not help the town in any way, shape of, that's mine.
But such as, sorry, go ahead.
I had the wonderful opportunity of having the MMA conference this weekend with Senator Warren, as well as Lieutenant Governor Trisco. And there's a heavy emphasis on affordable housing.
Absolutely.
They brought in, and I attended this workshop, it was amazing, that it was run by developers in working in creating public-private partnerships to create and fill needs, and one of the needs that is huge, and we haven't talked about it in this whole area, is veteran housing. You know, we always talk about affordable housing from the point of view of low income. We talk about seniors. We have a lot of veterans that don't have a place to live. And, and people are becoming more and more aware of that, and the need is there. And the federal dollars, according to Liz Warren, are coming down for that, so. We haven't met our forty B cap. There is a need for affordable housing. The big need is good planning and good marketing to bring in what will work for the community, because you're right, a lot of children are really going to that system and our taxpayers.
They just appropriated two hundred and eighty-five million for low-income housing today. It was on the news.
In the state?
Yep.
Yes.
That's only the state, never mind the federal.
Right.
That's an option. I mean, if we worked with a developer that would work under that umbrella, it may be a good option.
Rich Water. Really, they took over an old mill complex. They put together something really, really nice. So I, we could share contact information.
Yeah, and again, all of this was the, the bulk of this is all the planning board. Looking at things, looking at options. I know, I mean, doesn't mean the DDIC can't have input.
Right.
But it's really, this all goes back on the planning board, looking at options, looking at how spaces can be better utilized and maybe it involves housing, maybe it just involves retail, you know, just that kind of thing. We could have restaurants back there, that have all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, the office space.
Exactly. You already have some big, a big office space there now.
Were you in the planning board already when? No, you weren't. Uh, I don't believe you were. A few years ago, I the town owns a piece of land on Tremont Street. I think you were, you, you attended that, did you not?
Yes.
I, I thought that was, not because I came up with it or anything like that, but you know, small houses like one and two bedrooms, and that big entire complex. I thought that was a great idea, and if there's money available to do that, but who wants to do that? That's the big question. I'm too old to get involved in the building, you know, doing things like that, but the town owns that land, it's doing absolutely nothing to anybody. It's just coming up with the right idea to say, okay, if we need housing, there is a property there to do that. The question is, how do we go about it? The last time I brought that up, I actually was here, I can't talk.
You didn't bring it up on planning, you brought it up in the DDIC.
I'm sorry?
You didn't bring it up on planning, you brought it up in the DDIC.
Actually, I brought it up.
Within six weeks, the entire GDIC was kaput, it was shut down.
Maybe that's. No, but the whole thing is, I think that's something that should be brought back up. Or, or similar to that or whatever, but if we have the properties, why not use them to do something like that?
If it'll be okay, I'll go through my notes and find out, cause it's right up the street. And see if the developer, to that beautiful project in Bridgewater could come and speak to us and give us some ideas. It was an incredible, what I loved about it was that it was an incredible partnership with the public sector and government and business working together to develop this and funding sources from both sides coming together to make it happen. There was nineteen different sources, federal, state, private, so.
And it's good to go with someone that's been through it.
Absolutely.
John, thank.
Um, as a resident of Bridgewater, um, familiar with that project, um, and have been following it and one of the impetus for that project is that we have a T station. And you know that, you know, the MBTA, the state now requires every town or city that has a station, a T station, has to have affordable housing within like a half a mile from that station. Um, so that was the impetus of um, this mill development downtown Bridgewater. Um, as a matter of fact, they're even thinking about relocating the train station from the college closer to downtown so that they could do more of that development, actually. Um, so that was the big thing, right, was that, you know, Bridgewater has the, an MBTA station. And I think another thing that we wanna not lose sight of, folks, you know, when we think about this. Joe, you were talking about property on Tremont Street, but I think if you read the economic development plan, what, what Serp Ed and folks are trying to do is say, how do we make use, the most use of this beautiful riverfront property that we have in the town, right? It's all along, you know, where Princess House is, along where uh, Mount Hope. Uh, that, that Mount Hope, um, you know, mill is. Um, and they're saying, how can we capitalize on that river area, um, so that we can tag into the trails and all the stuff that, you know, are all happening in, in that area. And it just makes it much more, um, I don't know, much more better, I guess, um, for a developer to say, yeah, that makes, that makes sense. There's a, there's a, an attraction there.
I, I don't know if that, if you're looking for an answer to that, but you know, I, I can honestly tell you, we have a princess house right next door to that, we have the aqua- quadi. It was that, and then we have, most of it is all privately owned property, then we come into the, to the school. Uh, there's really not much there, then you go, going uh, towards Somerset. Most of that is all wet, it's areas that we can't build anything on there. I, I mean, uh, uh, maybe there is a spot here and there, but not much at all. Even the section that we saw there on um, on the video. I was there not long ago, and there was one gentleman that came up to me, he goes, most of this gets, when it's high tides, the parking area gets flooded, you know, a foot of water, six inches of water. So, you, you know, what are you gonna do? Put a restaurant in that area and then it's high tide and it's, everybody has to go where?
Yeah.
It's, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's where not in a good area.
Yeah, no, I think this is why Mike was trying to get a consultant to come in and work with the planning board and say like, here's what your options are, here's what you could do a little differently, here's what you could tweak. Could you tweak Princess House area to not be exclusively industrial and allow restaurants and stores in there? You know, just to give that more option, could do those, those thing. Um, he'll probably talk more about housing. I do wanna be careful to say, this committee housing i-influences economic development, but that's not our, our job here isn't to like promote housing or to develop housing in any way, this we're not the forty B committee, we're not the planning board, you know, make recommendations about what we think, you know, could help businesses, but I, I just wanna make sure we don't go down that radical, so.
And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to put any of that, those ideas down in any way. All I'm trying to do is make us visualize that not a lot of this is possible. Uh, you know, some of, most of these areas, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. The, the uh, Princess House? Yes, it's, it's possible, but the buildings that they have there, I don't know if they could enter a second floor or whatever on, onto those.
Those particular. Somebody would have to come in there and redo the whole place, if they really wanted to.
That's all of those things.
Yeah.
You know, maybe before we go and spend our wheels on something like that, we should actually talk to them to see if it's something that they would entertain, uh, you, you know what I'm saying? I, I'm not.
I mean, if they wanna entertain it, it's because some developer who thought it had potential came in and said, here's a check. And it's either a good check or a bad check, and they say, okay, good, you can, you can try your luck now here. You know, that's how things work, but, yeah. So again, a lot of this goes back to the planning board, as we talked about. The fourth item here was something we had talked about here, which is support continued growth of home-based businesses. And about a year ago, and a lot of the people on the board on this, now we're not here a year ago, but we had come up with some rewrites to the bylaws, base businesses. We had taken it to um, building commissioner, town list administrator, and some other people. They're like, oh, this looks good, we'll get back to you with some feedback, and the year's gone by and not really much action in terms of feedback, so I would like to just bring this forward to the planning board. I mean, they're the, they're the ones who would have to say we agree with it, we'd like to bring it forward with whatever tweaks they think are appropriate, you know, put it up anywhere, uh, town meeting. So I had shared actually the um, a revised draft, I sent it out, of what the rewrite would look like. Um, and I redlined it with what the changes are. Uh, I did share a copy with Jeff Gavala, who's chairman of the planning board. He thought it was uh, good. Um, so I think he's um, commendable to like these kind of changes too. He had a couple comments, Paul had a couple comments. But I didn't know if people wanted to talk through this, and if this is something that they'd like to move forward and have one of us bring forward, if you know, I'd be willing to do it to present it to the planning board and say we'd like your, you know, support of this, and we'd like you to bring it forward. They probably were gonna change it a little bit, you know, but do we wanna talk about that tonight?
This is very unpleasant. Planning board, board of selection.
Yeah. I agree, yeah. I think the planning board is gonna have to look at it, tweak it. And then like everything gets presented to the board, it's about in terms of endorsement for bringing it forward and not to a meeting, but um, this is very much like the one we discussed about a year ago. Um, with a couple changes. One is, we had talked a year ago about the idea of people doing retail out of their homes, like small business retail. I know, Joe, you had some concerns back then. And originally, I didn't think it would be a issue, except now, but I've been thinking about it. We do have restrictions in here about traffic, you know, like no one and two customers at a time, that sort of thing. That would be almost impossible to do with a retail setting. People just show up. You know, the idea of saying you can only have like two clients at a time, really implies that you're doing everything by appointment. Hmm, so I think just for that reason alone, retail's kind of like, that's not a good fit for, you know, home-based business. But there are some other things in there, like um, with a special permit. And if you have, right now, we allow people to have landscaping businesses out of their homes, if they have like fifteen acres, I think. Uh, because the idea is Uh, because the idea is, you have a lot of equipment, you have a lot of degree. You're able to screen it from your neighbors if you've got a big enough lot. Um, and there are quite a few um, automotive places in town, like just purely in a residential area. Where they're, we're doing car repairs, all kinds of stuff. If they have, you know, an equally big lot, and maybe fifteen is too big, I don't know, but. They have an equally big lot where it's isolated, it's not annoying to the neighbors, you know, the screening, the noise, all that kind of stuff. Why can't they do that too? So, if they're doing it now anyway, basically, but, um, you know. So that would be probably the other one that people might have the hardest time with is, you know, automotive repair. But I think a lot of the other stuff in here, which kind of falls under the caveat of like, what, Serpik calls artisan. Which is small time, things you make out of your house, you know, that kind of stuff, that. You don't even know what's happening, it's, it's quiet, they're doing candles, they're doing woodworking, they're doing all kinds of stuff. They're running renting businesses, they're, you know, we've got people in town that run um, travel agencies out of their house, you know. So, all those kind of things that. But um. I don't know if we want to read through this tonight, or we want, so if people want to look at it some more, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
I'd like. I'm gonna read through it, but I'm also happy to wait and give other folks the opportunity to read through and talk about it later. I, I either want to find the thing.
Okay, why don't we, if people want a chance to read through it, it's our such like an opportunity, and then we can bring it up at the next meeting and then. With whatever amendments people have during the discussion, then we can say, yes, let's bring it forward to the planning board, see what they think.
Sounds great to me.
Yep. Did anybody have any obvious questions they wanted to ask tonight about the proposal?
I'd like to know, why is it highlighted in red?
Those are the changes.
Okay.
Yeah, the black is the existing.
Yeah.
The red is the changes.
Okay.
Yeah. And the strike throughs are part of the changes too, so.
Yeah, I read through it and it, you know. I think I gave you my feedback already, you know, it looks good.
You use the term, no offensive noise. Define offensive.
It is subjective, and the planning board may say we need to define that better. Um, I don't know, I mean, this is.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It says, there shall be no offensive noise, define offensive.
Hmm. If I'm asleep and you wake me up.
Work nights are sleep days.
I think some of that is hours of the day. You know, it varies, like kind of this day time. Uh, one is, what's the normal background noise in the neighborhood? I mean. You have traffic already, you have, you know, it's a residential, it's not perfectly quiet. I would think offensive means, do you even know it exists? Like music. Well, most businesses aren't gonna play a lot of music, but yeah, unless you're a music store, yeah.
Are giving music lessons.
I would think to. People actually know you're running a business, it's like, rise to a level above that, same like with traffic. The rise to the level above what you would normally see at a hall, then it's probably, you know, exceeds the threshold.
I had an incident years ago, I used to have somebody cut the lawn here on the corner. Now, all of a sudden, at seven thirty in the morning, somebody's knocking on my door. Oh, that all, so I come and open the door. You are not to have those landscapers on that property until proper hours. I said, what's a proper hour? He goes, eight o'clock in the morning, it's, no sir, it's seven o'clock in the morning, and. And go all mad and walks out of my house, I think he just wanted to come over, I don't. Uh, it, it's amazing what people will.
Oh, yeah. You try taking a big tractor and spraying it daybreak, which in the summer is pretty early. Like, shh, be quiet, tractor. Yeah, it is, and, and, yeah, and it was commercial too, it wasn't the local. On the uh, revisions to appendix A, what does SP stand for?
Special permit.
Okay.
So, existing currently, there's, what you can do, just absolutely, you have the right to do this out of your house, that's already in the bylaws. And then there's, you can do this out of your house with a special permit from the planning board, so those, that's already exists.
Okay.
So I was just like, both of those, making some changes too, in terms of what's allowed and.
Okay.
Um, the other interesting thing is I talked with the chairman of the historical commission in town, that Kales. Because. I think the idea of home-based businesses. In Dayton, is a little bit different from the old, some home-based businesses in other communities, only because there are communities that are. Truly built upon the idea of suburban. You know, it's the residential enclave that exists that allows you to get out of the city, where all the noise and the traffic and the pollution and everything. That's not like, like suburb, so. But the number of homes in Dayton has certainly gone up quite a bit in the last twenty years. So I wanted to talk to Pat, who's been here all her life, and just like in the past fifty years, what's the evolution of business in town? Big business, small business, home-based business, where you see the store on every corner, kind of thing, um. You know, just how's it evolved? Because I want to be able to present that as part of the picture about. Why you should be allowing a little bit more flexibility in terms of home-based businesses, than you might in another town like. You know, I don't know, Lexington, Massachusetts, which is ninety-nine percent, well, maybe not downtown, but it's pretty residential, so. You know. So this kind of captures, you know, why is Dayton a little bit different from other communities? It's not a suburban town, it's, it's rural, it's agricultural. Now, this is kind of fitting with it. So I, I hope to talk with her probably before our next meeting. Um, I've been asked properly, I'll be joining us, it was on my staff mission and, you know, I can bring that back to you, just. Part of that picture that you present to the planning board and to the public when you go to sell this, so. Um. Uh, the next item on here, the next five, six, seven items, um. Provide expectations for rural landscape design, integrate artisan zoning into the bylaws. Adopt a riverfront overlay, which I think they were suggesting around the Shaw's area yacht club kind of section. Um, those are all really planning board activities that, that we might have some input to. Um. The town does have landscape guidelines right now, but they're really just around buffers and screening. You know, it's not really a design. And, and some idea about native landscaping as opposed to, you know, because they want the plants to be, to thrive if they're gonna be for screening and that sort of thing. But nothing about, I think she's getting at here, which is. What can you do to keep the town looking rural, you know, and. A nice community, as opposed to what I think a lot of people complain about, which is just. Dirt and sidewalks as you go down County Street kind of look, so. Um, and is there something the planning board might consider adopting around landscaping that's. Kind of helped improving the look of the town as opposed to just buffers and screening there, are what we're concerned with, so.
You know that we are open for anything. Um, if it's a business.
I noticed town of Dartmouth. The overlay district allows marinas and water-based activities by right. How would it work out in Dayton if somebody wanted to come in and start a marina? Like they're saying here. In Dartmouth, it's by right.
Sure, it's gonna be by right here as well.
Think so? Um, does it need a special permit?
If you're in a business zone area, you're gonna have a marina.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're in.
But how much, how much of the waterfront is business zone?
Not much, yeah, if any, I think.
There you go.
Yeah.
So if we haven't got a business zone and some big restaurateur comes in and says. I'd love to put a gorgeous restaurant here, maybe a little marina next door. The town can say.
But I, that's.
You think they wouldn't?
So, my, in my opinion, we're dreaming, because I don't see any area that we. We have probably what, two, two, three miles of riverfront that I. And I really don't see.
We looked at it earlier. Down at the time.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Big problem, that there is no land to support septic system. Now, if surge were to come, that would be a game changer, but until then, there's nothing to support. That would be restaurant, you need.
Right, so, right.
Sanitation system. That was, we had a developer from Rhode Island. That was very much interested in buying the yacht club and uh. Putting in a business, putting in a restaurant, and expanding the boating.
Manufacturing uh, yachts.
Yachts, correct.
Yes.
Yes.
I was really hoping that that would come to, I thought that would have worked.
The drawback is. Quick support sanitation system.
Well, the guy, the yacht.
Well, I think for him, he was all set with that.
The guy with the yachts was all set, it's just, he could not come to an agreement with the previous owner, but on price, so.
The, 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 the price, I think was the issue there. It wasn't the septic system, or.
Cause he was just gonna build yachts.
I'm sorry?
He was just gonna build yachts with a small crew.
Yeah, that's all he wanted.
Yeah. But. Um. But again, this is more planning board review when they get to looking at all the town zoning. Um. This one, I think, is, is good, enhance the agriculture community through the development of agriculture or incubator spaces. Um. And I know, uh, John, you were talking about Gotham Greens, um, what's the name of the company?
Yes.
You were reaching out to them, or you had reached out to them, or?
So, um, I, I have a colleague that, that knows the CEO of that company, so. He has reached out to him and I've sent him an email, haven't heard back from him yet, um.
I don't think everybody here knows who Gotham Greens is, though, what they do.
Yep, okay, so Gotham Greens is a innovative um, company that has, I think, nine. Facilities, um, where they started in Brooklyn, actually Brooklyn, New York. Um, on the roof of an old mill building and they grow. Herbs and lettuces and, you know, greens on the rooftop of urban buildings. Um, and they've been tremendously successful, like I said, now they've got nine. Um, growing facilities uh, across the country. One of them is in Providence, actually, that's the local, uh, the closest one. Um, and if you look, look them up, they're on the web, it's called Gotham Greens. Um, and I am trying to get in touch with the CEO there. To ask them about what their requirements are for siting, for infrastructure, for labor. And that sort of thing, to see if they would be interested in doing anything in Dayton if they look to expand, so, um. We'll see what happens, hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have been able to um, have that meeting with the CEO and. Be able to report back something, but, you know, that would be another great spot where we could maybe. Get that going for either Mount Hope or Princess House area, you know, might be good.
Yeah, I think, I also found it interesting who your contact was, so. Mr. Schultz, who was the former head of our finance board for many, many years. Eric, wrote a book. About innovations in business.
Yes.
And he featured this company in his book, so.
I think that would.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah. And that kind of fits in, that's exactly what this is, you know, agricultural. Now, I think they're taking it to another level, which is. Um, when they say incubator spaces for, for agriculture, it's, you know. I, I don't know if this would work at the Spring Street Mill on some date on the future with a different owner, or the same owner if they had change in their business plan, but. You know, small spaces, interior spaces that are growing, baking, you know, producing food items. All those kind of things in, you know.
If, if I may also offer, um, one of the things in the economic development plan from SERP is they refer to an organization called Hope and Maine. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Hope and Maine, they're in Bristol, Rhode Island. And as part of my score work, volunteer work, I, you know, I work with a lot of small. Uh, companies or small pe- you know, people that want to start a small business. And there's a number of people that want to start home-based baking uh, businesses. And I send them to Hope and Maine because they rent out space for industrial, it's industrial kitchen space. But I think that's another area where there's probably enough demand, and it's a, it's a, you know, it's a clean business, right? Um, where if somebody wanted to start up this incubator space and rent out. You know, the facility for people to come in and produce goods, um, that's another good thing for the town, right?
It's very hard to find like commercial kitchens.
It is, and it's so expensive if you're gonna do one in your own home.
Mm-hmm.
So they're very complicated.
A lot of people want to make salsa and hot sauces, but they can't do it in a residential kitchen. Um, they have to do it in a commercial kitchen.
I imagine two big components, if you were doing this on industrial scale and renting out space, are power and water. Yeah, so big places that are available in town would be the mill complex. Or Princess House, those both places have lots of power and water available to them and big spaces. Not that they wouldn't have to be reconfigured by, if somebody wanted to actually open that up, but. You know, those are sites that it's conceivable that somebody could do something like that in.
Yeah, storage is.
Yeah, it's storage space, period, yeah, so.
Yep, so if anybody is interested, you know, you could look up Hope and Maine, it's quite an interesting business.
Does anybody have heard of uh, restaurants on barges?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, actually, one of the partners.
That would work, yeah.
Floating restaurant.
Yeah.
Floating restaurant.
No, that one of the partners, I think, kind of, is the primary partner, one of the partners that has the new owners of Shaw. I think both the partners, Lou and Berkeley, owns a floating restaurant in Rhode Island.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Really? See, that I think would work for our area. Because no matter how high the tide goes, no matter how, you know, it's flowing. Just have to find the right spot.
Yeah.
And the parking, hey, it's up to you, maybe they can do delivery or whatever, if you know. It's a restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea what this person is, you know, he owns a place like that, so he knows what's involved. He's now part owner in Shaw's, so I'm sure he knows what's involved, if he's, if there's any possibility, he's probably given thought to it, but. There's parking, there's a site, there's place to park your barge, there's, you know, he's, he bought a place that would be. Perfect spot for it. Um, I don't know if zoning would be an issue because Shaw's is grandfathered in today. You know, it, it's a marina and it's only a marina and nothing else is gonna go there today. Oh, those are, again, does the planning board. Take exceptions, look at it differently in that area, so.
I still think that a uh. Somebody wanted to start up a restaurant that way and then they would come into shore. Load up all the people that move. Question is, how do they use that for facilities? It has to be. Every day.
My son-in-law has a ninety-foot barge, has about seven barges.
And no restaurants.
No restaurant, kind of busy.
Yeah, that's what I do.
I know it's an idea, I'll shoot him. He, he just bought a nine, a ninety-foot naval barge.
You know, and this is again, a lot of the planning board stuff, but a lot of everything we talk about here is, how do you open up auctions for people? We're not. Starting the business, we're not funding the business. How does that just open up auctions? How does that, you just open up auctions for these people so that? The people who are created enough for, at the pockets to do this, yeah, that makes sense. I'd like to try that, so.
But it, what I think you're saying is if it's already in the bylaws that, or whatever, regulations, whatever it's called. Like, it doesn't have to be, go through the planning board to get approved, like already have it.
Oh, everything.
Always has to go through the planning board, no matter what.
But.
Only to make sure that they're needing all the regulations.
Yes.
You're, you're allowed to do this, so yeah, you get to do it. Here are the regulations, the planning board, you're just gonna like. Watch and make sure that everything's being met in terms of parking and sewer and lot size and setbacks and all those other criteria that fit in that.
No matter what it's zoned.
Um.
That's what my question. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if you have a residential law and you build a house on it, don't know that that comes to zone, the planning, it's. On the Board of Appeals, maybe, but.
No, yeah, it comes to the planning.
Okay, alright. So yeah, pretty much everything, so.
But, you know, the, the idea is that we, the town is open. For any suggestions, if somebody comes in and puts the, you know, an offer in, whether the zoning board or the planning board. I think if it's something worthwhile. The boards are all open to, for business, that's basically what it comes out of. So you can even grow chickens.
I did that here, didn't hurt. Wow, too much, too many, uh, weezers and stuff, yeah, my chickens.
Oh, wow, that you just have to get a gun for that.
Yeah. Um, there are a couple of German shepherds.
Yeah.
The next suggestion is infrastructure, and I know that, you know, John, you said before that. Part of it is refocus, it's the grassroots of solistic sense. It's not something the town's gonna afford on its own. It's. It's starting the grassroots effort to start moving with state or federal in terms of. Things like sewer or water improvements, that sort of stuff. Um. Yeah, right.
Big emphasis coming down the pipe, sewn is P F S remediation. Um. The Biden administration, based on my discussions over the weekend. Provided eleven billion dollars for water. Infrastructure improvements, and that covers a lot of different things. Including P F S, bridges, waterways. Of that eleven billion that Biden. And the Congress put forward, one billion Maggie and Liz Warren were able to bring. Into Massachusetts. So there is money, but the focus is going to be.
Water.
The P F S, in the case of Dayton, it's two and three. Upgrade their, their plant, their filtration system. So.
So, I was just.
It's tied up, there's a lot of money, but it's.
Right.
That focus.
Right. So I, I think there are plenty of people already looking at this. It doesn't mean we can't lend our support, but, yeah, okay. Um, and then the last item, oh, next to last was around brownfield remediation, which. I know that the town has tried to work with the owners of like Zepka, um, property. Not very successfully, um. I think Serpents is just making the point here that. It's really a great opportunity if you can solve the nut and have the cleanup done. And there are federal and state, you know, sources to help you do that. Um, there are ways to leverage and put pressure on the companies to follow through on it, even though they tend to drag their feet. Some more than others tend to drag their feet. Um, but potentially, you know, it's a huge site that could be repurposed. Um, safely, if you did the, if the cleanup was done and. It's not something you should just write off and say, you know, it's just there, just let's it, you know, it's just, it's a big opportunity for the town in terms of acreage and. Possibilities.
We talked about that this weekend, and one of the obstacles that Dayton will have. Is that a lot of the bigger communities have more political influence. There's only so much money going around. So it would help if we're going to pursue this, that we get our local. State rep, Senator Wood, but also Congressman Ashen Bush. Advocacy, networking, you know, creating a political group, cause everybody's. Trying to grab a piece of that pie. Right now, it's not as big a pie as water, water seems to be. The primary focus of the feds in the state.
Um, and of course, in here, they have responsible party. They've listed just about everybody because it is, you know, everybody working together, so. Again, it's the kind of thing, I, I think we could try to find ways to help, but I imagine that. If there is a point on this, it's town administrator.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're not gonna try to go around him and start our own efforts, so, uh, but working with him, certainly. Um, and then the last item in their recommendation was character and placemating, placemaking, so, um. One thing I hear, and this is more for, they did list us, but I think Dayton Trails Parks and Rec would be in here, which is. Um, refining and signage around the town for the parks and waterways and, you know, public facilities. Um, it's just another way to attract visitors, which means people spending money. Um, and there are the other towns that have done this and leveraged CPC dollars to pay for it. Um, so I have talked to Parks and Rec and Dayton Trails about it, and, you know, they're interested, so. Um. I think it's, they would probably wanna take the lead on something like that and, um, but that is a, a, a valid suggestion. Um, they mentioned again about, um, home-based businesses. But then they talked a lot about agritourism and farm diversification, so I'm not sure. Exactly what farm diversification means, but, um.
That means like.
Farmers here.
Like I farm and I go to farmers' markets, but I also do agritourism at the farm.
Alright. Is there a lot of that in Dayton agritourism or not?
I don't know of any.
Uh.
No.
Are stables that rent out, would that, would you consider the agritourism or no? That's, uh, not, not to rent out here, but rent out for people to come in and ride.
I don't know.
I think it depends on what, if there's like an education.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, Rougeos did something down that line a while ago. It was about ten years ago that they started it.
Are there, it'd be interesting to know what are the obstacle, it, it would seem like. Labor and, you know, having the business to support, to run it, be a big obstacle, but. Are there obstacles that the town puts up in terms of? I don't think, I think zoning, you're pretty free.
Pretty free, yeah.
Yeah, to do things like that.
As long as you're respectful, I found. If you're respectful, the neighbors are good.
Yeah, I know, I know I spoke to a farmer in, uh, Berkeley who was doing it and was very successful at it. So much so that the town started clamping down on the traffic flow in and out of his place because there was so much traffic because he had so many customers, but. Um. But I just didn't know if there are things that the town should be looking at that help. Open up those possibilities for people. Who have that kind of property, you know, whether it's an existing farm or just land or.
I don't know of any one that does it or who could.
Are there?
I don't even know how many farms there are. Not many, not many. Not like twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, fifty years ago was like everybody on the street.
There were subdivisions of farms.
Hmm, well, that's what happens.
Is that anything that, I mean, they list map in here, their responsible party, just because, you know, they support. The agriculture community, but are there actually resources through CMAP for people interested in doing things like that?
I think CMAP would. I mean, they can try and help, um, they, they help farmers in, in general, but the Department of Ag. The State Department of Ag has a whole agritourism.
Do they?
Department.
Okay.
And, um, Farm Bureau is. Um, the executive director, uh, she's been working with the state about some. Uh, I don't know if there's a bill. Being on, but just promoting more agritourism.
Okay.
In the state.
Okay.
But I, I don't think that's really a. An issue in Dayton, just somebody wants to go for it.
Yeah, okay. Um, so everything we've gone through are just like their recommendations for things that we could do. Doesn't mean we cut it down to saying what specifically, I mean. We could just say we wanna do it all in twenty twenty-four, or we could just target what we think is reasonable. Given, you know, the size of our committee and what we wanna do and, um, I don't know if we're gonna decide that tonight, but. I think you just wanna lay it all out there so we can think about, do we wanna like come up with a target list? These are the things they wanna do this year, you know, based upon this and our own suggestions about. You know, what we wanna accomplish. John or Paul?
Yeah, Dan, um, do you think we could like maybe, and I'll volunteer to do this, um, create a spreadsheet? That has each one of those initiatives, um, that have D D I C named on them, say, and, um. And then have a column for each one of us and we go in and rate them either one through ten or A B C. Something like that where we think, you know, these are the most beneficial ones that we think we can get done and that sort of thing. I don't know, I'm just thinking, is there some way we could maybe? Work together to kind of like rate these things or prioritize them.
That makes sense to me. I mean, if you'd be willing to do that, that'd be helpful, that, and then we can just. Interface is one, two, three for every item and see what comes to the top of the list that's feasible for us to accomplish.
Okay. Does, does everybody have Excel? I mean, if I send out an Excel spreadsheet, can everybody like enter in the numbers on? For them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Cool. So I think for all of this, other than what we first talked about, which was perhaps doing something on our own in terms of a, um. Kind of along the lines of what the Chamber of Commerce had done the past couple of years, um, but for Titan businesses, which probably would. necessitate some funding. Most in here, at least for the D D I C, they're not dollar items, they're legwork. You know, um, so that leads us to what, if anything, not if anything, but what? We want to make a request to the town for funding for the next fiscal year. We had, for the several last several years, been asking for a thousand dollars. We have not spent anywhere close to that each year. Um, probably, um. We did spend for the drone footage. Because of what she, she didn't do the whole thing, but, so I think that was like five seventy-five. Um, and then another two fifty when we, um, for the sponsorship of the, uh, that year's, um. Chamber of Commerce event, um. But that was a one-off for that five seventy-five, so. I, I'd hate to just go in and say another thousand. If we don't really have an idea of what we're doing with it. Um, and although it's a small amount of money compared to the total budget of Dayton, we do know that. They're getting tight, you know, with.
If you hate asking for a thousand, go for two.
Really, yeah.
The other way, actually.
How much is the completion of the video going to be?
Well, the video's done, other than us.
But I mean.
Turning it into.
Together with music and everything, how much is that?
Well, we would need help putting together a marketing campaign, and the question is, do we know right now what we're marketing? I mean, we can say we're marketing the town of Dayton, but are we targeting sites? Are we just saying, hey, Dayton's great, are we? Who's our audience? Um, I think you have to answer all those questions before you start editing and putting things together. It's like. We knew we would need something like this in our back pocket to create that kind of content. But I don't think, certainly right now, we know what, how we would do this, like, in. Who are we targeting? Are we trying to, are we going out and saying like? Princess House could be a great site for redevelopment, and we want people to get really excited about it and come in and. Maybe make an offer to buy out the current owner and turn it into a retail complex. That's one thing. Um, general isn't Dayton great targeting, kind of invites in developers more than anything else because people wanna live there, so. Um.
Could, was that be of some help, Wes?
I did ask Serpents about that at, um, previous meeting and they said yes, but I think. I don't know if we have a grant from them for the next custody year. I think Mike would have to let us know if they have. They have some monies that they allocate the town to use as needed of Serpents' time.
Is that something we might wanna put in our budget?
Um.
To help offset that.
Generally, I don't think the town pays for that, Serpents. You get a grant from Serpents for hours.
Consulting.
Yeah, consultant hours. I mean, if we were to say we wanna hire a marketing consultant, that's a lot more than a thousand bucks.
No, no, I get it. That's why I was thinking, was that what you'd be?
Yeah, I think nobody thinks, does that or Serpents, you know, as pursuing a grant through them for hours to help with this, then yeah.
Okay.
Um. So I don't know that, again, we're asking for money from the town if, if we pursue that route for a grant. You know, we're asking either hours from what Serpents already gives the town or a free grant from them. No, uh, from the town that we need to request. I was gonna suggest like five hundred bucks for next year.
I feel like it should be more.
Uh huh, definitely.
I also feel that. I don't know all the businesses in town, and I, I don't know if it's our job to let the residents know. And I feel like if the residents actually. Shop or use the businesses in town, then the businesses in towns will think, oh, wow, Dayton is a great place to have a business, so more businesses will want to come to Dayton.
Mm-hmm.
True, and I think we've done two things. I won't say they've been hugely successful in terms of like the attention they grabbed, but. One is the town directory, which is on the town website, where any business. Um, in Dayton, there are like fifty-five or so out there now can list themselves with their information. It's kind of like a Yellow Pages listing. Um, and two, the, um, interviews that Paul's done, um. Both of them have gotten some attention and positive feedback, but neither one of them have like, you know, changed. The dynamics in any extreme way. Um, I think, you know, if we were to do something like we talked about saying do something at Arushos, we just picked Arushos. But we let people come in and. Set up a table, advertise their wares, so that kind of stuff that might be more exciting.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Um, and that would, you know, help them and, and get the word out about who these people are, so, um. So do you wanna stick with a thousand bucks? Do you wanna? Saying yes, you know.
Would we use some of the money for that event if we do have it?
I think, oh, definitely, yeah, sure.
How many businesses are listed on the site?
Right now, the, well, it's optional if you wanna be listed, and there's some that don't wanna be listed or have just never replied back one way or the other, so. It's only, it's an opt-in only, so there's about fifty-five right now.
How many?
Fifty-five.
That's not bad.
Um, and ninety percent of their home-based businesses, there's very few like. You know, the Dunkins or the bank, Dunkin' Donuts banks, uh, the places in town are not listed. They just never replied back to me when I.
Well, they're not for six.
Perhaps if we were to, um, as John mentioned, maybe, um, if. Between now and next month, if we were gonna be looking at what, um, you know, what bites of the plan we were going to be focusing on, or what we're gonna be focusing on for our priorities for the, for the coming year. Maybe that will, um, between now and our next meeting, maybe. It would be a good idea if we were to come up with some of our priorities for twenty-four and then let those kind of drive some of the budget requests. Because if we know what things we wanna focus on, that might kind of better inform what we wanna ask for and kind of temper it by what we think we can reasonably do this year, if that makes sense.
The timeline for the budget is February first.
Oh, yeah, true, true. Alright, never mind.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can ask, doesn't mean we're gonna spend it. And then it's.
We don't spend it, we don't spend it, but I always say. Say, okay, go for more.
Definitely, definitely.
One of the things you can. Is the submitted budget. That is literal. And you can always amend it when we go through the budget process.
That's true.
The board is left.
Okay. So if we want to reduce or add.
Go for two thousand.
Come on, Len.
You know they're gonna turn us down.
All right, so.
Go ask, ask for more, and then if they don't give it to you, okay, that's what I wanted anyway.
I would like this, that's okay. Sounds like least epic for a thousand. Okay.
I would say that.
Okay, all right, so I'll do that. I'll submit the paperwork. And the breakdown is just very generic. It's just professional expenses. It's no smaller bucket. You don't have to say. We're spending it on A, B, and C. We just. We're asking for a thousand dollars, so. We'll, we'll keep it at that.
Mechanics hasn't replied to you?
In terms of being listed on our website? No. Now maybe not gone to the branch manager. So she said, oh, I'll have to check with the home office, but thank you. It sounds interesting. Maybe they're just not replying to her.
No, because I I belong to the Prince Henry Society and they're very, very good to us.
With mechanics is.
Yes, very, and something like this, they may even want to sponsor their sign at this. Get together. You'd be very surprised. How great they are. I could find out the head guy's name that we built with. It's a man.
It might just be that it gets pushed onto somebody else.
Exactly, exactly.
Top of their to-do list, so like, I even like, I only put my business on. Couple months ago, just cause, oh, yeah, I want to do that, but then I got other things I gotta do.
Right.
Right.
So like, I think you did send out another. Did you send out another reminder?
I send out periodic reminders to anybody who's not on the list. I send out periodic reminders to them. And the, when somebody gets a business certificate from the town. The clerk, most the previous clerk and the current clerk, tell them. You know, you, it's free, you can be listed on the website. You just have to tell us what category you fall under. You know? So sometimes they say yes, sometimes they. Decline, so.
I just recently received my. Renewal. Notice for my business. I've never got one before. It always fires. Forget about it.
Maybe it's our new town.
A new town, doing the job.
The job, yeah.
You know. President of Mechanics Bank is a Dayton resident.
It it's, we almost have a competition between Bristol County and Mechanics. Does that, I'll I'll sponsor that and I'll sponsor that, so. Be very surprised. We get one going between. Bank and mechanics. They always want that's. They have to spend money. On um advertisement, and they like to do it in their own town. Especially for other businesses. They want businesses to go to their bank. How good they'll be good, and believe me. You can't believe what what they give Prince Henry.
Okay.
They're very upset we don't ask them.
See, there you go. Ask for more.
This is what I mean, yeah. I mean, we're not shy.
And and they were a contributor. And the vault.
Were they?
Mm-hmm.
No, what for the production.
They're very, very um oriented to the town. What they can do.
So let's start talking, as I said, outreach through shows. You know, the venue for them doing this as a venue may work, may not work, but they probably have ideas or at least clues into what's involved in all of this because they've done it multiple times with other things. And then I'll report back at our next meeting. If they say yes. What time of the year is a yes for them? Because I'm sure that's, they've got a lot going on, so.
Does anyone know anyone at Bay Bank?
Bay Coast, do you mean?
Bay Coast, yeah, I don't deal with them, so you could tell, huh?
The president is a Dayton resident.
Know the man at Jeff Good.
I work with the branch staff pretty extensively.
Paul just said he works with the branch staff a lot.
Oh, great.
Oh, we have contacts.
Yes.
Jan is the.
She has some plus in the street.
So for correspondence, I don't have any um public input. I had mentioned that the uh Berkeley Town Administrator is gonna come here. There was some mix up with the the date, so probably they're gonna come in February. They just wanted to pick up reins. They don't have, of course, something that correlates to the D D I C in Berkeley, and so they were kind of interested. Um getting some information. Um I did not have an opportunity to get the minutes together. Our last set of minutes would, other than a very brief meeting with the. Um quarter selection in December would be from October, so I just have to resurrect those and put that together. I'll bring that to the next meeting. So if we stick with the fourth Monday of the month, our next meeting date would be Monday, February twenty sixth at six P M. That work for everybody?
Don't worry, no.
This is a Monday. Yeah, okay. Um, any, oh, you wanted to bring up about whether. It's like you're at American.
CMAP. Joined forces with uh other organizations. Um and is putting on the Southeast New England Agricultural and Conference Trade Show. It's gonna be at the Aggie on Sunday, February fourth. So there's gonna be some things there for farming people. You can learn about mechanics. If you're an advocate for food systems, um this gonna have um. Four H activities there all day. There'll be a trade show. As well. I can send this, the link to uh Paul and everybody else on this call. Um the other thing of the Bristol Aggie, it has a vet clinic and they're gonna have an open house. I'll find out tomorrow when it is. Yes, it's gonna be in February.
It's like a rabies sex, rabies vaccine type clinic or something else, or?
Yeah.
I mean, like for small pets, rabies vaccine, okay?
Yes.
Do you know if um any kids from East? Are eligible to come to this, you know?
Yeah. The other thing that I thought was interesting is um I'm gonna be joining this local working. Group um that the state is having um. And here they're, it's. Um they talk about um. Recommendations to develop conservation solutions, and I was just thinking about all of those. Riverfront property that is in the. The tops here and just conserving that as much as possible. So this is gonna be. I think it's like an hour and a half meeting, um but everybody in the state just talking about ideas.
Um for conservation, you know, this is beyond agriculture, this is.
Yes, yeah, beyond. It's agriculture and just um conservation.
Um I don't, actually, I said there was no public input. I I I know that um Robert Gears on the line. I didn't know if you had anything to add and. I. Um, in case you don't know, he's also a member of Open Space.
Okay, so that's a be up his alley.
So it'd be, um, I'll probably share with the Open Space Committee, see if anybody's interested. So this is on a particular date?
Yes.
It's on the link, I'm sure, so.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know why it's not on me. Sorry about that. You gotta look at my email slate.
You know, these questions, but with the vet clinic, I assume you've already noticed how we have animal patrol officers, if you can focus on it.
I will check.
Okay.
For Slaggy.
Yeah, okay.
I think they did.
Um probably, yeah.
Yeah, I know. They actually contacted all the. Vet clinics in town to make sure that we're not, they're not trying to compete with any businesses. This is, this is just part of the, if this is an education program. And they're, you know, letting the. The public come in as well.
I didn't have anything else today. I didn't have, we went a little long tonight. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up before we adjourn? No, okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Actually, before that, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do.
Absolutely. I'd like to second that.
Any kind of paperwork and to you as well, John, uh uh Paul. You guys are all. Putting in for this. All I do is run my flap ourselves.
Yeah, we're waiting for you to do some work.
Is not my thing, so I, I've said this all along, and I just want to thank all of you guys that participate in it, so.
Well, you know, a lot of the businesses in town, so when we, if and when we get to the point where we have this event that we've been talking about, we can stick you on the phone. Uh, do you have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
I have a second. Second, second. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Seven forty one. So uh, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Cable.
You have a great night, everybody. Thank you all. See you soon.
Thank you.